I had someone that thought that I was pretty cool and sent me a nice little note, so would you like to take it away?
Good evening, my name is Lenaya Johnson and I am a first grader at Patrick. Good evening, my name is Lenaya Johnson and I am a first grader at Patrick Elementary School. On behalf of Mayor Sarter, I would like to call to order the City of Jonesboro Work Session on April 7th.
Thank you, thank you all. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for me, please?
Yes ma'am, Mayor Pro Tim Messick, Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Don Dixon, Councilmember Alfred Dixon,
Present.
Councilmember Lester, and Councilmember Miller. We have a call.
Thank you so much. Council, before us, we have an agenda. I have a few additions and then I'll entertain any other additions that you all may have. We're gonna remove item F up under new business. Well, I would like to. I would like to add for item F, a discussion of a interim city manager. For G, a migration contract from our current ID, IT department. For H, information regarding the procurement process. And then also, item A is consider approval of the rollback rate, not the tentative 2025 Milisch rate, but the rollback rate. So again, I was ask, I would ask council to entertain removing item F, replacing F with a discussion regarding the city manager interim contract. Having a hard time with alphabet here. G, migration contract from our IT department, and H, our procurement process. Counselors, any other additions? Councilman Powell?
I'd like to add on discussion about all city issued credit cards.
Okay, that would be E, F, G, H, I. All right, anything else?
That's all right.
All right, so that brings us to J. Anybody else over here? Anyone over here? No? Okay, so just clerk, so that we're on the record for it. Item F for new business is scratched. Item F now would be discussion of interim city manager. G, our migration contract from our IT department. H, procurement process. I, discussion regarding city credit cards. J, information regarding the audit, and also changing item A under new business for council to consider approval of the rollback rate for fiscal year 2025. Everybody good? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda with said changes.
Motion to accept the agenda with said changes.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor? All right, our agenda is set. At this time.
No, not at work.
Okay, all right. Right now, I will have public comment. You all have three minutes to speak. If you would come to the mic and state your address. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorious demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon the mayor or council. Please state your name again, address, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers again should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the mayor or council. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll have Joselyn Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joselyn Taylor. My address is 313 Wilburn Street. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I am concerned about a few things regarding Jonesboro Housing Authority. Last I spoke with you all around November or December regarding being in favor with the partnership with Presswick and the conditions of the tap water. We haven't heard anything back regarding the partnership. Now I come before you because I am tired of not being heard. We as a community have all shared some grievances about our maintenance man's behavior to higher ups, and it fell upon deaf ears. Our community meetings came to an abrupt halt with the feeling of an us versus them situ- situation, excuse me. I have personally have, I personally have emailed about water issues since 2020. The most recent event, I seeked medical help because I felt like I was about to die. I shared my concerns with the leasing manager and director and was told that me boiling water and such could be a contributing factor for mold growth. But that would mean that cooking regu- regularly, I'm sorry, is a contributing factor to the mold growth as well. I came here with the hopes that this would be a stepping stone for me to eventually become a first time har- home buyer through working. But I am stagnant with my health continuously declining. I have had a water test done and a mold test with evidence to prove that the building is worse than what was shared with us. An audit and a thorough inspection should be administered from a third-party source not affiliated with Clayton County. Some key takeaways, sometimes our work orders are not answered. Mold toxicity in health for long periods of time can hinder an already compromised immune system. There's bacteria in the water and an odor that fumes when it's raining first in the morning. When it rains, the house smells musty, which is a sign of mold inside of the walls. When the pipe burst last year in my unit, there was no remediation for mold. Normally, a building spores, normal levels will be between the ranges of zero to a thousand. My unit is 2.27 million spores. I have six kids. When I was hospitalized, I was told that I had symptoms from being exposed to mold. My two younger kids have really bad asthma, so it's being compromised with just living inside of the unit. I know you're probably wondering why we just won't up and leave. It's not that easy if I'm trying to if I'm trying to make sure that I'm a citizen that's taking care of my home to the best of my ability, I, I need some type of help or resources in order for us to get out of here because it's not fair.
Ms. Taylor, thank you so much. I thought this item had been resolved from the last email, so thank you. Would you just give me a day or two to get with. I can check with our community development officer. I'll reach back out, but just give us time. I have your phone number and your email address.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Shaw, are you here for the Quickmark? We have a public hearing. Would you prefer to speak during that public hearing? Well, no, you can speak now, but sometimes for a particular item is heard during the public hearing, but you can. Okay, come on.
Hi.
Hey, my name's Akshat. Good evening, first of all. I'm the business owner of AHS Quickmark. It's located on 249 North Main Street. It's my first business. I, I was closed with the previous tenant and he was not able to fully operate the way how we wanted to operate. So I decided to step into his and obviously trying to take over from him, so need approval for transfer of beer license.
Well, thank you so much. We'll have a public hearing and then there'll be another required hearing and consideration will be set for Monday, April 14. Thank you so much. Arlene Charles?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight with a concern as a citizen. I live at 127 Arnold Place, Jonesboro City, Georgia. My concern is, I came about a month ago and I said I hope that I would not hear negative news about the city of Jonesboro. And my main concern is that a few weeks ago, we had a very elaborate celebration for 90 days for what I thought was a beautiful city manager. And all of a sudden, I heard on the news that she resigned and that just broke my heart. It actually brought tears to my eyes. I don't work with her, but from what I saw and how she reported in the meetings, I thought she was gonna be here for a while. So my thing to Madam Mayor and council, please, as a citizen, I know that it's very important to have a city manager because it's actually the city manager that runs the city and supposedly will report to the mayor and the council. And so I wanna know, we've had, I think this might have been the third one. I don't know what the, in the second one. So I'm speaking directly to you, Madam Mayor. Can you please explain, because I thought this was a young lady that I believe had a family. And she seemed to be very intelligent, and it hurt me to see why, the reason for her resigning after we had such a you gave her such an elaborate 90-day celebration.
It was a little over 90 days. Thank you so much, Ms. Charles.
So will I get a answer?
No, she said Clarkson. You can reach out to her.
I'm reaching out and I don't wanna be.
So I don't wanna be rude, but that's a personnel matter.
But I think as citizens, as a citizen. You know, I just wanna have an idea because.
People, let me just say this.
Okay.
In, in general. People make choices for a number of reasons.
Right.
Salary, proximity to home. There are a number of reasons why people choose to leave. I can't control those. Council collectively as a body, we can control a higher salary that might make us more competitive. So there, there are a number of things, but that is, that is an individual personnel matter and out of due respect for her, I'm limited in the things that we say, but.
I know, but the only thing I was saying, Madam Mayor, is that the fact when you celebrate 90 days.
Ma'am.
That doesn't matter.
Well, no, because I didn't know she was leaving at the time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, like, why would I celebrate if she was gone, you know, so.
Okay.
I appreciate you as always, Ms. Charles. Thank you so much. Alrighty. Any further public comment? Anybody that might have joined us late that'd like to say anything? All right, I'll now consider public comment closed. Thank you all. At this time, there are no presentations. And council, do you mind, Attorney David Dryer, you might help me with this. I forgot to state that we'll have executive session for the purposes of only personnel matters. Do you mind if somebody make a motion to amend the agenda to include that? Is that, or do I?
It's already, it's already listed on here.
I know, but usually we strike what we're not talking about back there, but I don't have to?
I mean.
Okay, you're good, okay. Typically, we customarily say what we're doing. Okay, well, we're good, if you're fine with that. Yeah, but typically in the past, if you've heard, we've always said, we've been clear on what we were going back there to talk with, so. Okay, great.
So what are we doing?
Nothing. All right, we have no old business. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would call the items up under new business?
Yes. A, council to consider approval of the rollback rate for fiscal year.
Oh, a public hearing, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. There you go.
Public hearing.
There you go.
Council to discuss alcohol license application number 25-ALC-002 for retail sales at 249 North Main Street, Jonesboro, Georgia 30236. The legal business name is AHS Quickmark. Excuse me if I pronounce the name wrong. Akshah Shaw has requested to be the licensed representative. Required hearing and consideration is set for Monday, April 14, 2025.
Is there anyone here to come to speak on that public hearing? Were you gonna speak again? He was just standing. So is anyone here to provide public comment for that particular item? I'll now consider that public hearing closed. There are no presentations, no old business, new business, Madam Clerk?
Council to consider approval of the tentative, I'm sorry, of the rollback rate for fiscal year 2025.
And I'll do this, council, before you, you have our rollback rate, and since we have some citizens here, Milisch rollback rate is what we're required to publicize. That's something new, and basically what it says is, if our digest it increased, what would be the rollback that we could have to make the same amount of revenue? So we have to post our rollback rate, and so our rollback rate is 7.363. These calculations were done by our county office. Do y'all have any questions? If not, this is just to allow, do we need to vote on the rollback rate? Well, we can't really, do we need to vote for the record?
No.
Okay, because it's as stated.
This is enough, yeah, this is enough, mayor.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, would you, did you have a question? Okay, so if you all see our rollback rate is 7.363, which means if we rolled our rollback rate with the increase in our digest, we would still come out with the same amount of revenue. But this is to be mindful that you don't always do your rollback rates because your rollback rate takes into account the revenue coming in, but what it does not take into account any type of inflation for expenditures. But we're just required by law to post that, so that'll be our published rollback rate, 7.363. Were there any questions, council? Alrighty, thank you so.
Next item, B, council to discuss downtown development authority board appointment.
And Mr. Simpson, our downtown development authority manager is at our National Main Street Conference in Philadelphia. His recommendation is adding Brian Holmes. You have that information in the packet. If this is okay, and you all have no question, I'd like to move that to the consent agenda. No objections to the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, council.
Letter C, council to discuss a partial road closure on Courthouse Way for meet me on Main sip and stroll event on April 18, 2025.
Again, this is for Mr. Simpson, our downtown development manager. We had similar closures, is that right, in from Kato Chief last year, and so we're just putting on the record for approval for the April 18, their first sip and stroll. Council, you all okay with this going to consent agenda? Any objections to the consent agenda? Thank you so much, council. Councilman Dixon, wanted to have a discussion in regard to the city sign ordinance.
Yeah, so I actually wanted to ask legal counsel if he could speak to the, to the current sign ordinance that we have on, that we have on the, on the record, and also, I guess Andrew's not here today, but also wanted to see exactly what the new sign ordinances, sign ordinance, what the desired new sign ordinance wanted to be for the businesses.
Councilmember, will you say that one more time for me?
Yes, sir.
Just so I can follow a little better.
So I know that there were some talks about a new sign, a sign ordinance being updated to provide businesses an opportunity to create some type of advertisement and monetize that in some form or fashion, but we had to get the sign ordinance updated. So I just wanted to get some clarity as to what the current and what the changes would, would need to be to reflect that.
So, well, yeah, we do, we do have somebody looking at, so I was just asked by Andrew Simpson about sign naming. I mean, road naming and that kind of stuff, but we have someone who can, who has been looking at the signage itself.
Yes, so, so when, when you look at the sign ordinance, we wanted to make sure that we do the whole sign ordinance altogether. And then that's looking particularly at the historic portion of the city, the Main Street, because the Main Street program usually has its own type of signage. So I am getting with Andrew to see what that need is so that we can get a good sign ordinance and not just piecemeal things together, so we're working on that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is interim city manager contract.
Council to discuss the donations to Arts Clayton.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. So I had the pleasure of going to Arts Clayton a little bit before the gala that they just had, and it was brought to my attention that the city of Jonesboro isn't one of, they have a few different tiers of donations. And City of Forest Park, City of Love Joy, they're at the highest tier. And I found that, you know, them being in the city of Jonesboro, I would think that we would be one of those cities that would donate to them. At the highest level, it's about, it's $5,500 annually. And so I'd like us to consider that. Moving forward, I would love to, for that to be in the discussion for the budget, but for this year, since we have salary savings for the positions that have not been filled, I would like for us for next week to discuss approving 5,500 to go to Arts Clayton. They are, again, a wonderful business in our city. They do wonderful things for the community. They host us if we need to do anything like a budget retreat or anything like that. And so I just think that that's something that we can do and that we should do for Arts Clayton. I will bring back on Monday everything that the 5,500 includes, but I just think in general, that's just something that we should do and make it a point to do every year.
All right, letter F, interim city manager contract.
Council, I gave you all a, a document pursuant to Attorney Dryer. Do y'all see the document?
Look to your right.
Do y'all mind if we circle back to that? I'll get able to bring it. Do you have a copy of what we discussed in regard to the interim city manager? Well, we can discuss it now because the, the name and the amount was gonna have to be in executive session anyway.
Exactly.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have.
So council, there, we'll bring it to executive session, but what I wanted to discuss was the, and it's just a discussion, not a vote, but considering interim city manager for 30 to 60 days with very clear defined task, and I think it was four of them. ARPA reporting, LMID reporting, CDBG, LRA, as well as helping get started on the posting for the Milisch rate. So we'll bring that up, but just wanted you to know that I was talking to someone about that. All right, I apologize for that. The next one is the migration contract. Mr. Tran is here. If you all, now you do have this, it has a blue star on the front. All right, I'm gonna try to explain. If not, Mr. Tran, I'll let you come on up here to explain. So we switched over to a new system that holds all our minutes and our records because the other system was phased out. And so we have this huge amount of archived records from 2014 to 2025 that has to be moved somewhere. And so Mr. Tran has purported that he would do a one-time fee migration. The service is not offered to us through anyone else, so we either migrate it somewhere or we lose it, is that correct? Okay, I'm doing good. And then it'll be a $200 a month server fee. And in the past, we had been paying $955, so that's $755 savings. Actually, by the remain, the rest of this year, maybe two months, we've made up the cost for the actual migration. And that's the only reasonable option that we have to move all of those minutes and everything from January 6, 2014. The number of items there, the number of agenda minutes are there before you. So I would ask, unless there's any questions, could we please move this to consent agenda so he can begin the migration services? Yes? And if you could email us that way or email Ms. Bentley and then she will forward it to Tran, so we, so we will have it. All right, letter G, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. H, procurement process. Council, on July 10, 2023, there was a vote for consideration for some policies, changes in the procurement process. What I found out was that it needed to have been moved to ordinance, am I saying? What I found out was that it needed to have been moved to ordinance. Am I saying it correctly?
Yes, you're, and I can explain it, but yes, you're saying it right, Mayor.
Please, explain.
Y- yeah, in, in July tenth, twenty twenty-three, and this is, this is from my office, we found this when we were going through things in detail. Uh, there was a memo, um, circulated to counsel and, and the mayor, um, from the finance director at the time, laying out specifically what, uh, Jonesboro procurement procedure policy was. And everybody, not just counsel, but this was circulated to the city, said that, um, purchases, uh, over fifteen thousand require approval from city council. I think people are familiar with that. Um, for purchases that exceed five thousand require three written quotes and must be submitted, submitted to the written manager for approval. And there were, there were several things like that, which, uh, we were informed was Jonesboro's procurement and purchasing policy. When we started to look into the actual purchasing policy itself, that's actually not what it says. And it needs to be, the ordinance two dash one five seven needs to be changed to mat- uh, to match up with what was circulated and implemented in May, June, July of twenty twenty-three. So if that May, June, July, twenty twenty-three policy, which the city's been operating under since then, uh, is working well, as far as I know it is, um, then there would need to be an ordinance change. So we brought this up with the mayor. Um, sorry, we didn't give you more time. Brought this up with the mayor about in the last twenty-four hours, so, um, we wanted to do it right, though.
See, I understand kind of like, we voted and approved it, but it has to roll over to an ordinance. Um, and the previous, I guess attorney didn't notify us to move it to an ordinance, so we've been operating up under it. But when it was brought to our attention that it needs to be an ordinance, then I asked, um, Dryer to move forward with it to an ordinance. Question?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
I, I would like an opportunity to look, because this has been several years ago, and to look over and see if this is the, if this policy is in line where we're at currently.
Mm-hmm.
So I would like the opportunity to look over that before we roll that to an ordinance, to see if we need to make any changes before we make it a solid ordinance.
Sure, sure. And I, I'd be happy to discuss any of this, and I think you do have a copy of the.
I was just, we just received a copy.
They just got it, he just sent it to me today.
Okay, I, I'm gonna send you a copy of what was circulated, uh, from the office of the city manager and the finance director at the time.
I think they have the, oh, you're talking about the actual memo?
Yeah, that's what I, that's.
I think, I think that's what you gave, you gave us the actual agenda summary, and in there it has the memo from Nina.
Right, that's, that's exactly right.
So there is no more supporting document. So this is just FYI, this is kind of the, the procurement process that we've been operating up under. Without the recollection that we needed an ordinance. All right, thank you. Um, procurement process, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. City credit cards, Billy, Councilman Powell?
Yes. Due to the fact that we've had quite a turnover in our, in our employment, I'd like to create, to get all the credit cards in one pile and see who's got the credit cards, what they're using them for, and who's really needing to have the city credit card.
So all the, all the, um, credit cards are now in a place that Ms. Drewitt and I are familiar with. There's a sign out sheet. And what was that page you told me today?
Um, we have a purchasing, um, it's called a purchasing authorization form. Anytime a transaction is made, that form needs to be filled out and signed off.
So if somebody comes to get a Home Depot card, they have to come sign out?
They would sign the card out, and then they would bring the receipt back immediately, and then that form would be filled out.
All right, well, you don't mind getting all the credit cards in one pile and letting the city council look at them all?
Well, I currently have them.
And if necessary, go to the bank.
No, and right now, I don't, I'm, I need to check with David because I don't think you all have the authority to make any credit card. So the credit cards are put away.
We have the same authority you do.
No, you don't.
Under their funding, so you just.
No, you don't. So we'll hold on to those cards. You all can request a statement of the charges being used.
We want the cards.
You want, you will not get the cards. You can get a statement because we have the cards, because if I give all the cards and that's, to me, that's, that's a breach concern. I'll, I'll turn them all off, because I have the authority to do that as well.
We want the cards, Mayor, and we have, we have.
What do y'all want to do with the cards? Go get the cards, go get the cards.
Request the cards.
Okay, I'm gonna show y'all the cards right now. Y'all wanna touch them?
We want to give her the cards.
She has the cards!
At our leisure, look at them.
Okay, make, we'll make copies of the credit cards, we'll block out the numbers and provide them, not the actual cards, no. Because then if a, if a spending comes up, then now six people have had access to the cards. They want us to hand them a stack of credit cards for them to go and then charge some stuff to come back and say to Mayor, then charge something. No, that's not what's getting ready to happen. Now, we can tell you, we can make a list of what credit cards we have, whose name on the card, and the vendor. I don't have any problem being that, but turn it over, a stack of credit cards to council members, that's not getting ready to happen.
Do, do you just wanna see, council member, that they are all collect, every credit card of the city is collected in, in kind of a locked drawer? Is that what you want to see?
Well, we want to know what the credit cards are and who has access to use.
Okay, and we can provide that, that's, that's very reasonable.
And if we got any questions, then we'll go to the bank and get printouts.
Yeah. Well, you don't have to go to the bank, we can provide those printouts for you.
Well, I'm glad to go to the bank.
Well, you're not listed on the truest accounts, so you can't go to the bank. Mayor Protem can go. Yeah, so we can make a list of all credit cards without the numbers, the name of the credit card, um, who it's been issued to. Yeah, that's easy. We can provide that for you all.
And, and cop, and copies of who's checked them out, yeah?
Yeah, we just started that system, that system hadn't been in place, but.
That's great, that's a great system.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Drewitt? Okay, we'll be more than happy to provide that for you. Any other questions regarding credit card? All right. Um, H I J, audit process. Um, Councilman Dixon, Don Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just need to state it, uh, where we stand with Plant Moran. Have we, uh, received the engagement letter? Have we decided?
Does that put the forensic audit?
Yes.
Okay, per minutes, it was decided upon, Count, uh, Attorney Dryer, that we would hold off on the forensic audit, it was on public record, until we finished our two outstanding regular audits. Was that not the minutes, um, Ms., because I've asked you to check those minutes.
Yes, that was correct.
That is correct. Now, on Friday, our current audit team left, unbeknownst to me, and so we just have not had time to even look at, um, I did ask Attorney Dryer for solicitation for, um, our regular audit, and so his partner is working on that. All of this just happened Friday. So they have already been asked to get a solicitation together for us, so we can post a solicitation. But we verified for the record what was stated. Um, if you want to provide that audio for them, you can. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we need to consider, since Mr. Dixon brought this up, we need to consider moving forward with the forensic audit in the absence of an auditing firm. That was as we were going through the two state audits.
So again, Mayor Protem, having a forensic audit with two years of outstanding audits, yeah, you know what? Like, I can't even make it make sense no more for them. I mean, like, they just gonna spend the citizens' money. So without a current audit, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a forensic audit because they have no preliminary findings to go through. But again, as we said before, what are your allegations for a forensic audit?
Well, Mayor, the, um.
Let's Google what a forensic audit is. Hold on a second. Yes, ma'am.
So I, I, I have a copy of the, um, engagement letter for the forensic auditors. It's not signed, but it, it clearly states that we will be looking at credit card purchases, accounts payable, disbursement, and employee benefit payments.
Okay, again.
And it has a whole outline of the steps that they will go through in order to let us know exactly the amount of auditing they will need to do, including speaking with personnel and board members, um, refining the work plan based on the interviews, and obtain written policies and procedures so that they can move forward.
Okay.
Has the twenty twenty-three been completed?
No.
I thought it had been completed, and it was up to us to forward it to the state.
Now, you're speaking of the regular audit, I was speaking of the forensic audit.
Yeah, the twenty twenty-three that came in from, uh, Fulton, no, uh, stated that the twenty twenty-three had been completed, and they left instructions on what, where to send it, but that the twenty twenty-four had not been completed.
Have y'all seen the two thousand twenty-three audit? Have y'all seen the findings from the two thousand twenty-three audit? Anybody?
We have it.
I couldn't hear your question.
We have it, that's just from the.
Yeah, and neither have I, and that's.
Information was shared, so, so that will be something that we're gonna have to get hold of Fulton and Cozak if they need to.
So we're working, y'all, that, this just happened on Friday. We are working on that to get what we need from Fulton and Cozak. Because we have not received a completed, um, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three audit.
Um, I think, and counsel, uh, Mayor Protem, I, I just feel like where we are with, in, in the city right now, with the lack of, of financial director, with the audits outstanding, with us already making a decision previously, and we know that we're going to go forward with the forensic audit. I don't think without the appropriate people in place, it makes sense to start the forensic audit right now with so many things outstanding. We know that we're still gonna do it. It's public record that we said we're going to do it. I don't think that it's a smart decision. If they need certain documents, if they need things, who are we leaning on to provide that to them? So I think we need to get our ducks in a row and get things checked off before we go ahead and do that. I think we're placing the cart before the horse if we were to start the forensic audit with all these outstanding things and all of these vacancies. I just don't think it makes sense. You can correct me if I'm wrong, or show me your perspective, but I just don't know if it makes the best sense.
I completely agree. This will be a much easier process if we have a financial director in place. But since our financial director has resigned, we're, this is where we're at.
So I guess what I'm saying is, if we go ahead with the forensic audit, we have no one to give them the, the things, because we don't have a financial director. So, um, we were gonna discuss that in executive session. And again, it's helpful, counsel, it's helpful when you all have these ideas well before council meeting, that you just add them to the agenda, and then we'll know how to proceed as far as gathering the information. That's all. If I would have known that you all were putting that back on the agenda today, after we decided something else, then I could have, you know, I could tell you like, hey, we're gonna interview finance director or something. But, um, so we can do an audit, I don't know who's gonna give them the stuff because we don't have a finance director, and Mrs. Munjin doesn't have access to those things. And right now, what we're trying to do is transition what we had already uploaded to Fulton and Cozak. So it's a portal where we upload documents, and so Attorney Dryer is gonna reach out to them to make sure that they leave that portal open for at least two or three weeks, so that we can get Ms. Munjin to go in and bring those documents down, so that we can at least have those, whether we do a forensic audit or a regular audit. So counsel, I would just ask if you would just allow us at least a week to get ahead of this, except this just happened last Friday. Just give us a week. We need to close out Fulton and Cozak. Um, and then by next month, I mean, you all can have it, I'm convinced that I'm gonna, that we, we, we're gonna have this forensic audit, but it just needs to make sense. And right now, we don't have the staff to provide those documents. And we need to get our documents back from Fulton and Cozak, as well as the list of things that you mentioned, um, that they said. So if you all would just give us a week, maybe, you think? A week?
Yeah.
I, I would like more than a week, but we gotta do payroll. Yes, Councilman Powell?
Let's take a little, uh, voice vote to see if the council wants to go ahead now or delay it, which I don't want to delay.
Okay, we can, but I just wanna say you all vote, vote on it tonight. It is still administratively up.
We need to go ahead with the audit.
Okay. Because we, they changed their mind again. So if there was, well, I don't know if it was a motion, that's what happens when you throw these things on the agenda at the last minute. So I'm not sure if it was a motion for discovery, so I'm not sure if they can even bring it back to change it, so if y'all wanna go discover that. So you remember there was a discussion about we're going to do our two regular audits, and then we're gonna do a forensic audit?
I, I remember.
But I don't know if it was a vote for that.
Yeah, the ci- the city manager, the former city manager mentioned they were very close to finalizing the twenty twenty-three audit. And if we could wait through that, it might be, we might get more juice out of a forensic audit for whatever we pay, but.
So, I, you know, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with a forensic audit. Um, and as soon as we get a finance, um, upon hiring a finance director. Because you gotta have a finance director to push forward a forensic audit. And, and just for the record, the forensic audit is gonna cost us about a hundred thousand dollars, and then we gotta come back and pay another regular audit fee, so we're looking about two hundred-ish thousand dollars. So, um, the floor is open to entertain any appropriate motions?
Mayor, I'm looking at a motion that we move forward with the forensic audit. Once we have a financial director in place, they can provide the correct documents.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a, is there a timeline or deadline that we need to have everything in by?
I don't know, because you haven't a forensic audit before you've had your regular audit, so you're, you're doing a forensic audit on files that have not been appropriately audited. So it, it doesn't, so this is for the record, it doesn't make sense what we're doing.
For the regular audit, what is the deadlines, what, what?
Well, we don't know because, 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 uh, Ms. Charles? We, um, so we, so we, we, what would make sense is that we open up this solicitation, bring back to council all of those that submitted for the solicitation. We decide collectively as a body who would perform our audit. That gives us enough time to close out our files with Fulton and Cozak, because there's some things that Fulton and Cozak has that would easily move over to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Once we have that one in place, we don't even have to wait until that one is complete, but then bring the forensic. So if you all do want them to go parallel, that makes a little bit more sense because they can speak to one another. No, okay. Um, that would be my recommendation, like, not to not do a forensic, but let's get the regular audit team in place through our appropriate procurement process, which is through a solicitation that we collectively decide. Have that one in place, and then at that time, if you all want to run them simultaneously, then we can. But.
Mayor.
And here's the other option, um, I see, if you, you are really like Moran and Plant, let's let them do our regular audit. And maybe while they're doing our regular audit, we can ask them to look for any huge discrepancies that a forensic audit would find. Because y'all, y'all, what about that? Yes, Mayor Protem?
Okay, to, to your point, I don't think it's a good idea to have the same firm do your forensic audit that does your regular audits. I think that should be separate. Um, my question was gonna be to Mr. Dryer. Mr. Dryer, have you had a chance yet to prepare an RFP for our regular auditing firm?
We just found out Friday at noon. He and I just met today, before four o'clock. He just, he has not had time.
Have you had a chance to prepare the application for the financial director that resigned?
I haven't, but, but.
To, to prepare the what? No, we have that, we're gonna take care of that in executive session. We've already posted that. That position was posted when, the minute she resigned, so we have those app, but we, we, we're good with that. So, and also, let me just say this, because we don't have clear allegations on the forensic, that's why I didn't think it would be a problem for them to just go ahead and do it and tell them to look for any signs of theft, and then maybe they'll give us, and then, then based on the findings, then get another, another one. I mean, I'm just trying to save money here, but, because you're gonna, you're, we're gonna get to the end. Okay, somebody down there saying something? Okay, shh, shh. So, we can go, so also, the law states that we don't have to solicit for audit. We can collectively decide. So if we wanna really move forward with just getting our audit done, then I, would you all be open to us entertaining Plant Moran for, as our? then I, would you all be open to us entertaining Plant Moran for, as our regular audit, to just go ahead and get that done? Y'all have already kinda vetted them. Y'all, we all specifically want them to do the forensic? That seemed kinda suspicious.
They were chosen by our previous city manager.
No, it wasn't chosen, it was recommended.
Correct, it was a recommendation.
Y'all chose it. Y'all chose it. So, why can't they do our regular audit?
Well, because we need to go through the process. There's a process, that's.
The state of Georgia does not require that we have to have a process and our procurement process is very vague. So, in the state of Georgia, cities are allowed to, for professional services, attorneys, architects, engineers, you're able to select those without solicitation. Am I correct, Attorney Dryer? I'm almost sure I am.
I thought policy and procedure for us, Mayor, was to post anything that was over a certain amount as a RFP.
No, not for, not for professional services. But here again, if we knew this was gonna come up, we would've had time, y'all. The audit people just resigned last Friday. Now that I'm hearing all of this, that gives us a chance to discover exactly how we need to go about doing it. Gives them some time to, they don't just keep solicitations on, on file.
What kind of motion?
We did a motion.
We got a motion and a second on the floor.
What was the motion?
It was for.
Oh, to have a forensic audit.
Yes.
Okay, more discussion.
Yes, Councilwoman Powell.
You, you said something about do this audit when we have a, a Finance Director. What makes us think that we can get a Finance Director anytime soon when we've gone through three in the last year?
I don't know.
Why are we having trouble with a Finance Director? And city managers and the whole bit. Nobody wants to work for us.
Okay, so we're not gonna have that discussion here? Cause there, there, there is a lot of people that wanna work here and they're all here.
They don't, they quit.
Don't, not all of them. Councilman Dick, Councilman Powell, we're not gonna engage in that type of conversation.
If we don't start talking about it, we'll never get out of this.
Well, answer your texts and your phone calls when I call y'all to talk about stuff before a council meeting and maybe we can have some discussions. Yeah, so when I email you all about concerns regarding the city, respond. Councilwoman Powell, you never respond. Mayor Protem, you never respond. Councilman Don Dixon, you never respond. Councilman Bobby Lester, you never respond. Don't get here and act like I have not tried to communicate with you all. I will print every email that I have sent you all. I will show my phone log where I reach out to you all to have conversations when, before we get here. And the only people that respond is Councilman, Councilwoman Asia Miller or Councilman Alfred Dixon. And Mayor Protem, we have to play games with you and have somebody else call from their phone to get you to pick up. And you're the Mayor Protem.
That was inappropriate, Mayor.
No, no, it's, it's the truth, it's the truth. Uh, no, uh, we're gonna have to remain decorum outside. So, I'm saying, don't get here and ask about this culmination of problems because what I'm not gonna do is share some of the things that led to some of this that some of you all are responsible for. We're at a point now where we are where we are and we can move forward as a city and as a collective body or we can sit here and ridicule and point fingers to the next election.
We do have a motion, right? And is, was it seconded?
It's been seconded. I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, yes.
Just one more thing. I know the last time we spoke about this, we said that if we were to change the scope of what we wanted the forensic auditors to do, that we needed to put it back out. And I don't know if it was understood and you all can let me know that they were going to have people in place to provide them these documents and that these audits would be closed before they were to come and do this forensic audit. And so, we're increasing the scope of what we're asking them to do because all of these things are outstanding. Wasn't it, and I believe a few members of the council stated that that was something that we should put back out in a bid. So, are we foregoing that whole process? Since we're changing the entire scope of what we want them to do because we don't have people in place and the audits are both still outstanding?
Well, we might have one that's not outstanding, we just haven't.
But we don't have the information.
We don't have the information yet.
So, we're asking them to do more than we initially thought that they were gonna be doing.
I think also there was a, a motion to add six months for 2022.
I do remember that.
So, everything should be complete for the 2022.
Okay, but do they know that they're doing all of these things without this last one being finished and the appropriate people in place to assist them on what they need?
But we can find out in the, in the night to increase it.
I think that should be a conversation before we decide to just go forward because what if they come back with a different number?
That conversation was brought up and the mayor said that they had a flat fee of three hundred dollars an hour and that we could just times that, times the amount.
Times the amount of what?
I don't remember, I don't remember the mayor saying that, no.
If we don't know what is, okay, that's fine, but if we don't know what it's gonna look like.
I have, let's see.
If we don't know what it's gonna look like because we have all these things outstanding, what are we timing three hundred by? How, how much? Cause I don't wanna prove something and I don't know how much it's gonna be or at least an estimate of how much it's gonna be.
Okay, so, so Mayor, the information that, that we were given, that I had, was it was going to be about three hundred dollars an hour. Uh, this audit was gonna cost about sixty-five thousand dollars. This was all shared at our last meeting. That meeting, I believe, was on March the fifth, correct? And I, I think that, the, the Plant and Moran were contacted after that and gave us a letter of engagement to Mr. Dryer. Mr. Dryer, did you not receive a letter of engagement from Plant Moran?
It wasn't executed. All of that was prior to us sitting here on the dais saying that we would wait until.
No, Mayor, we, we sat here and had that discussion, but then the letter from Plant Moran came in on March the eleventh.
But we didn't engage in that because that one, that letter was already in process before we decided in the March meeting to have the two regular audits. So, we had already pursued that. Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor. It's been appropriately second to have an audit. A forensic audit.
To have a forensic audit, yeah, once there's a Finance Director.
Did, I don't think he, did he modify his, um.
That, that's what.
Yes, I, I, that, that was my motion.
That was.
Before with a forensic audit, once we have a Financial Director in place.
Just, Mayor, just for clarity, are we running those audits simultaneously?
We can.
We can. If we, so we'll be working on a solicitation this week hopefully and be able to have a preliminary solicitation for you all to review next week. Do you think that's possible? The solicitation, actually? To have it, like, for us to prove to put out there?
Yes, I think so. I think so, absolutely.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, it's been appropriately second. All in favor? Any further discussion?
Um, so, going back to.
Councilman Alfred Dixon.
Yeah, going back to what we need to modify for the, for the auditors, which you was just speaking on in regards to the price point. I just want some more clarity on that.
Um, the clarification that we have is that it's not about three hundred dollars. Their rate is three hundred dollars for six thousand transactions. They speculate that it would cost sixty-five thousand, but what we, what we're finding out is that, um, all of our documents aren't, like, readily available to be viewed, so, so we don't know. So, we'll just, we'll just.
Mayor, how come all of our documents are not readily available?
Because they're in Fulton and Cozak's portal that we're gonna work with to draw them down.
Well, they should have just a copy. We should still have possession of our.
We don't have a Financial Direct, we, we probably do, but it's much easier, I know where they are right now, than to have to go through drives and stuff. So, they're in a portal. We're gonna work with Fulton and Cozak and we're gonna bring them down off the portal and I have them readily available.
Is, is there, uh, can we put a cap on anything or, I mean, let's.
Well, you don't wanna put a cap because you don't wanna get started and be like, oh, we're not gonna spend over seventy-five thousand dollars and then they're not finished and then we got like a wasted audit. There's no such thing as a partial forensic audit, it has to be in its entirety. So, once you go forward, we're, you know, we're, and I want a good forensic audit, so I'm gonna make sure they do everything. Wouldn't you?
No, absolutely, I think.
Correct, so there, there is, and see, that's the limitation for not allowing a regular audit to go forth because, I'm gonna try it one more time. If the regular audit goes before, every audit comes back with findings. We've always had findings, long before I was mayor. It's not uncommon that an audit comes back with some preliminary findings. Doesn't mean that there's any wrongdoing and anything like that, just simply means that maybe a policy or procedure and then there's a recommendation. We have not had a forensic audit with some type of findings. Fortunately, there haven't been significant findings. So, if you get a forensic, I mean, a regular audit back that says there's no findings, then why would you do a forensic? Anybody know? Cause you want. Cause it doesn't make sense. Now, if a finding comes back and says there, you know, we suspect that there's been some violation of a procurement process that's mean policy, blah, 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 then, yeah, we got one or two things. We can go pull that and just ask them to discover it for us. Or we can go get a forensic audit and says, hey, one of our findings was that our procurement policy hadn't been followed, which you could do a forensic audit based on this allegation. And then we pay them for something very fair. So, I hope, I, I can't make it any plainer than that, you know? Cause you're gonna, I just can't do it, sorry.
Well, no, and I, I understand the council, you know, they just wanna make sure that the finances are handled responsibly and the transparencies.
And if the council wants finances to be handled responsibly, we start by being responsible with our finances. And what's responsible for our finances is getting a reliable firm in here to do our initial physical year audit. And then from there, we go from a forensic. But we don't have to do, we can defy logic here. So, there's a motion on the floor. It's been appropriately second. There's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? All right. All right, well, I don't have anything else on the agenda. We can move into our executive session. Did you need any clarification on any of that? We're gonna get a Finance Director.
Right.
That has to be appointed by me.
Right. Recommended by you, him.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? We're now in executive session. I'll meet y'all back there in a little bit. I'll meet y'all back there in a little bit.
April. April, I'm so sorry. I won't call you anymore. I don't want to take any trash at this. I entertain a motion to go back into regular session, counsel. All in favor? Any opposition? We're now in regular session. Counsel, is there any business that we need to come before the counsel for vote? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for Aware Consultants LLC, a 30-day contract for a $6,000 flat fee.
What capacity?
City man- interim city manager.
Effective when?
April. To begin the week of April 14.
Thank you so much. Counsel, there's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? All right. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there any other business to be heard? No, I entertain a motion to adjourn. You looking at me, attorney?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Any discussion? We're now adjourned. Y'all have a good evening.